Welcome to the City of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, April 21, 2015. I guess we have a couple of items to... We do have a quorum, it appears. And the first item will be to approve the minutes of the regular meetings from October 21, November 18, and a special meeting on December 2. So if you could take a quick look at those minutes and I'll entertain a motion to alter or approve.
Well, I'll make a recommendation to approve the minutes as submitted on October 21.
Okay. Motion to approve the October 21 minutes. And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we accept the minutes as written for the November 18 meeting as well.
Motion to approve the November 18 minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's a lot of words in these minutes. I don't think you read them all.
Real quick. About 90 percent.
And the last one is the meeting on... The special meeting, which was on December 2.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Deborah? And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So then, all three sets of minutes are approved. We have new business, and the first item is a proposal for 132 Park Circle. Charles and Katherine Ramsey requesting to build an addition to their residence. Robert, do you have anything for us on that?
Sure, Chairman Backland. Excuse me. This property, 132 Park Circle, it's located midway on the east side of Clark... Excuse me, on the east side of Park Circle, and is shown on the location map in your agenda package. The house was built in 1950 in the ranch style of architecture with a brick veneer. It's not located in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places, but is in the East Main Street Historic District that we locally regulate. The applicants previously received approval at the November 17, 2009, meeting of the Historic Zoning Commission to reconstruct the entry to their house, as well as remove and replace shingles on their roof. They want now to demolish their existing garage and add living and bedroom area with a covered porch and a carport on the north side of their house. As seen on the site plan, that was included, there were no requests for variances. The additional consist of materials that match the existing residence, and those are included in your agenda package. And I also have some actual materials out here. Cement fiber board and the other shingles. A letter and a booklet from the applicants is included in your agenda package and with an explanation of the proposed project. The color and material samples of the hardy plank siding are also included in your agenda package, and they'll also be available at the meeting for you to review. The applicants are in attendance at the meeting and will be able to answer any questions you may have, and I'll be able to answer any as well.
Yep. Thank you, Robert. And would the applicants come forward, please? Identify yourselves and your address.
Hi, my name is Kit Ramsey. This is my husband Chuck Ramsey. Oh, here he is.
He's left-handed.
She's left-handed.
And one of our builders is here, and our architect is here. Mary Hackle and Steve James. First of all, I'd like to say thank you all for the time that you take to sit on this board, and we really appreciate what you do. We have gone through this once before, like Robert said, in 2009, and we just would like to keep our downtown area. We love living downtown, and we'd like to keep it pretty and in keeping with the Historic Planning Commission. We have a growing family. When we bought our house in 2009, we thought it would be just us two, and now we have not living with us, but we have two grown children who are both married and who both have grandbabies, have babies. So we keep our grandbabies a lot because our children both live out of town. We have one child whose husband is in med school and another child who works at the McCollie School, so, and they live in Chattanooga. So I'm ready for any questions that you might have.
Do we have a picture of the addition?
We did receive, for instance, the drawings in our packet, so we're at a loss as to what you're doing.
Okay.
Pass this around.
I have one also. I also have two additional pictures that aren't in your packet.
So they're coming out towards the street. A little bit further.
But it's wide too much with the porch.
We have a small version.
Sorry for the delay, but we didn't see.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. I didn't realize she didn't have that.
I don't think it's your responsibility.
Mr. Chair, could I make some comments?
Sure.
As an architect, I want to compliment everyone about the addition there, that it breaks up the massing. A side connection is always a difficult one to me, that it frequently overpowers sometimes the house. So I think the way it's been designed, by having that brick wall screen this courtyard and everything, it gives a connector that makes it a little looser, not a hard connection that makes it a nicer thing. I would point out to the board that the carport does extend out to apparently align with the front porch, but they've been good to go with the spirit of the gable end that has the siding up, the shingles up there, and the column effect, so that it tends to blend very well. I think the fact that the ridge of it is lower than your main house is complimentary to the design and doesn't overpower it. It's subservient to the main part of the house, and I think that's always a big plus in designing additions, that it not overpower the original building. So I compliment you all on this space that you've added, that it connects well, it doesn't just cram right up to the side of it. You've got the courtyard to provide relief, and then you've tried to pick up the spirit of the main part of the house on the addition in the front. I think that's... And it doesn't exceed further forward than the porch of the house. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Any other comments from any of the board members? Is the... The original house is brick, is that correct?
It is.
And the original house was actually a much smaller house. It's had a number of additions.
That's correct.
And how much more lot do you have?
I think we're probably at capacity.
Okay.
We did not do either of the additions prior to this one, so...
Okay. So like, there are some bedrooms on the far right as you face the house. Those were added, it looks like.
If you're looking at the far right, that would be... That was a bedroom that was added, and there's one behind it that was added.
Yeah.
They also added a bathroom in the back hall, and then there's also a bathroom, was a bathroom, now it's a hallway. The second window is actually a hallway from the end. So what I did was I took that bedroom in 2009. I took that bedroom, and I made that a master bath.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like it started out as like a small post-World War II ranch style house.
Right. Two-bedroom, one-bath house.
Thousand square feet, probably, sort of like a Levittown house, almost.
Yep.
And has grown to Main Street size.
Not quite.
Depends on how many more grandchildren they have.
I want my children here with me, so...
All right. So any other comments from anyone?
I would echo Jim's comments about the design. I like this, and I think it's very well done. I might say as usual, but this is... It's good to see this.
Thank you. We had a vision, but we also have a good architect and a good builder, so...
It's not built yet.
Make a motion, we approve as submitted?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2251 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Angelica Reed. Could you step forward, please?
Yes, Chairman Backland. If I can begin by saying this is 2251 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Angelica Reed. They're requesting to convert a detached carport behind the main house into a recreation room. The property is on the west side of Middle Tennessee Boulevard, one lot north of the corner lot, or the corner at intersection of East Main Street. The house was built circa 1920 in the colonial revival style of architecture with an arched doorway, multi-pane windows, fan light and side lights. It's a two-story brick house with a gable roof, and it is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. The applicant wants to convert the existing carport, which is located behind the house, into an air-conditioned space. A brick facade will fill the front opening of the enclosed carport. Windows and the door will be added that will be... That will match the existing main house. Landscaping will be added to the front of the converted carport. Included in your agenda materials are drawings of the proposed carport, along with photos of the existing house and the carport, and photos of the house on either side of the property. Notes in the drawings explain the proposed project and provide a description of the work to be done, as well as explanation of the materials used on the project. The applicant's agent will be present at the meeting, and I'll be able to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes, I have one. Mr. Chair, the windows on the existing house, are they vinyl also, or are they wood, or what are they?
Existing house is wood. We were just hoping to do completely customized windows, vinyl, just for the maintenance of them, but they would match in style exactly.
Are these a wood-clad vinyl, or are they just vinyl?
Just vinyl.
And are you the owner, or you're representing the owner?
No, I'm the designer on the project. I'm Emily Dyer.
Oh, okay.
Here for Angelica.
Mr. Chair, did the owner look at... It's a carport. When you fill in the walls, it's a carport filled in. Did they look at this flat roof of saying... I mean, did you look to see if it was cheaper to just tear it down and build something new, like you really want?
Well, I think she just wants a space where she can kind of do her crafts and just kind of keep it a raw space, and she really loves the character of the home. The side of the carport has really intricate detailing on the side that she loves to preserve. She really loves the home as it is, so she's just trying to make use of what she has and enjoy more of her property.
When you say it has intricate detail, you mean the side of the house, not the side of the carport?
Side of the carport has really neat arched openings that she really likes that match the house. I don't know if they're on your photos or not.
They don't show up in our package.
I didn't put it in there just because it's not visible from the street, but there are details on the side that she really would love to keep that opens up to her courtyard behind the house.
And the sides are currently brick?
Yes, the whole thing is brick.
So the only thing you're infilling is the front wall where you would have driven in?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
The booklet that she provided in your package, it kind of shows the arched side in the drawing.
It could be the first page of drawings and photos. You can sort of see on the side that there's something.
Okay, barely. Gotcha. Sorry.
Yeah, if you're looking at this one here.
Is this a bottom drawing, the floor plan, so it's not a rectangular shape? It's...
No, it's kind of an odd-shaped building. Kind of a trapezoid.
Yeah.
And you're not adding square footage, you're just simply enclosing and developing the inside?
Just filling in a wall so she can use... Make use of that space, because it's currently just waste of space for her.
And it doesn't leak at present?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I guess just my issue is that I don't... As a rule, we do not permit vinyl windows, and I'm personally concerned with the size of the windows you might be putting in there, that they're solid vinyl, that they may fatigue over time. Fiberglass tends to last longer than vinyl. Vinyl sags over time, and I would highly caution you, even if the board even agrees to it, that vinyl is something that may not last the length of time she hopes.
Would you permit the fiberglass? Would you permit fiberglass windows?
Well, I mean, if I had my druthers, I would say you need to do painted wood like the house, so that it matches. I know it's the maintenance issue. I think we may have... I don't know. Help me board with, have we ever approved vinyl-clad wood windows? We may have on a rare occasion, but very rarely do we allow that. The fact that this building sits back so far from the road and is subservient to the main house, I guess is one thing in its favor, but I'm always concerned about the precedent we set when we allow things that we don't normally do. So that's why I raised the issue to my fellow board members.
I was thinking that perhaps it was done on the second story of a...
Third, maybe? Third story?
Yeah. It was upper.
Oh, was that the wonderful house on Main Street? Yeah.
On another example, on College Street, they had done some work before coming to the board, and we asked them to remove them.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the one you're talking about, Rick, is that one was the third floor. It was just very hard to get to, and the single-pane windows, and they were, I think, even fixed, maybe. But they were the round-headed ones, the French Second Empire House.
I just remember discussing it, and then at the end of the day, we allowed it, is what I recall.
No, the red brick house. Big towered house with a Christmas tree.
Oh, you mean the Smice.
The Smice House. Didn't we allow those third-floor windows to be, or fourth, whatever that is? Be fiberglass. It was somebody else. It was the White House, the big White House. White House, oh, what I call the wedding cake house. Okay. That's the one. That's it, you're right. Thank you.
Jim, what's the difference between aluminum-clad wood and vinyl-clad wood?
It's still just a wood sash. It's just going to have either a prefinished metal, or it's going to have a vinyl casing on the outside, and it's just to prevent... It's just to not have to maintain it with refreshing the paint every once in a while. It's just a personal preference. My... For me, me speaking, I'd rather see painted wood windows, but that's one thing.
I have a question. I see that there is a bath to be... A bathroom to be added. Is there any kind of kitchenette facility to be included with that?
No, it's just really just a workspace. She's an artist, so she likes to be able to clean up, and so she just has the bath in there for her own use.
But this would not be appropriate for a rental unit?
No, no, she has no plans to do anything like that.
Without a Board of Zoning Appeal, approval of it as a... Like a mother-in-law quarter type place?
No, no, she's just using it as her kind of art space.
Right, thank you.
You said you were the designer?
Yes.
And did you price vinyl versus wood windows?
I have not, no. It just was a request of the client.
Yeah.
So we put that out there.
Do you have an idea what the difference might be?
I'm not really sure, just because of the nature of the windows. They're highly customized with the arches and everything, so we'll just have to price... I think for her, it was more of just the maintenance of it, just because it's a large home for her to maintain, so it was just going to be a little easier for her.
From a historic district point of view, wood is preferable.
Okay.
Can I ask what material is the soffits of the roof are?
That's... I believe that's wood. That's existing.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the maintenance of wooden windows, but, you know, today's primer and paint, they aren't nearly as bad as they were many years ago. And being that there's just two windows and a double door, I would also recommend the wood windows over the vinyl. And in between is the aluminum-clad wood, which you wouldn't run into your sagging problem with those.
With the timeframe that you have, would it be acceptable to check on those prices and come back to us and talk to your client?
Sure.
Would that be an option?
Sure.
Wouldn't it be that if that option were acceptable, that she could proceed without coming back? We do it that way?
Sure.
Then all you would have to do is let Robert know.
Let Robert.
Okay.
So are we going to make a motion with wood windows, and then if they find the price too high, then they will come back?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion, then, that we approve it as designed with wood windows and leave the vinyl windows.
Second.
And doors.
And doors, excuse me.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and you can proceed with finding a price for the wood and...
Thank you.
And letting Robert know at the planning office.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 1005 East Main Street. James and Pamela Hale requesting to replace front door and windows. Add shutters to front door and windows. Add a bay window to front of house, and add a chimney cap to chimney. Is the applicant here?
I don't see the applicant in the audience.
Okay. So what would we normally do in that case? Do we proceed, or just go ahead?
Yeah, we can proceed, and we might not come to a resolution, but we can proceed.
Chairman Backland, this property is located at 1005 East Main Street. The applicants are James and Pamela Hale. They're requesting to replace front door, the windows, add shutters to the front door and windows, add a bay window to the front of the house, and add a chimney cap to the chimney. Like I say, the house is located on the north side of East Main Street, between Cherry Lane and Park Circle. The house was constructed circa 1970 in the modern colonial revival style of architecture with a central chimney, a gable roof, brick veneer, and it's two stories. The house is a non-contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. In 2005, the applicants received approval from the Historic Commission to construct an addition to their house and an attached garage at the rear of the property. They would like to continue their renovations by replacing the front door with a new metal French door with a transom. In addition, they would like to add shutters to the windows at the front of the house and to the front door. They also want to replace the lower-left front window with a bay window and add a chimney cap to the chimney. And in the heading, I mentioned that they were adding windows, and I forgot to edit into my main paragraph of they're replacing the front windows on the front side of the house. So that is also included in their request. In the agenda materials are photographs of the proposed front door. That includes the door shutters and windows at the front door of the house, along with the shutters. The bay window will be located at the lower left of the front of the house, as you look from East Main Street. And applicants, they're not in attendance at the meeting, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can do.
Robert, are we to assume the pictures of this restored home in the package is Robert, are we to assume the pictures of this restored home in the package is what they're going to, the, what their, their renovations going to look like?
She mentioned it's a Marvin window, and she was supposed to be at the meeting here. Somebody was, either her or her husband, with, with some brochures, some more, some bit or something materials to look at, and she's just, she's just not here.
Well, we don't know the material of the shutters, for one, and it says they're going to be the length of the door.
Uh-huh, door shutters.
The door shutters. So if I'm looking at the front of this restoration picture, this seems to me that'd be awfully long, but the main deal is, we don't know what the material is.
That's the purpose for them to attend the meeting, to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt, I would point to everybody at the back of this page here and this other page to look at. I think it has information that's handwritten, that makes it clarify, clarifies some things. It says the front door changed from metal painted to French doors. So it's going to go from a single door to a pair of doors. Each door will be 30 inches wide, so it'll be a 60-inch opening, then with shutters. If I read this correctly, is what was hand, apparently handwritten by Mrs. Hale. It is going to look similar to that picture, but we don't know if the transom will be round-headed or square, like is already there currently. I don't think that house has a very high ceiling, as it does in the example of the charming restoration from Cooking Delight magazine. It's a round head, I think they have probably eight-foot ceilings in that house. I'd be surprised if they have nine, and I don't think you can get a round-headed window, transom, above a pair of doors. So then the question is, is the shutters going to cover the transom and the doors if closed? Those are going to be some fairly token shutters for either side, to, if you were to close them in your mind, would they cover a 60-inch opening? I think they'll be just token decorative shutters. So I'm just trying to paint the picture so y'all understand from what I'm reading, that we're all on the same page, but it is a pair of door, French doors, metal, but there'll be a 60-wide inch opening, then with a shutter of some width on either side, and we don't know what the transom is. But it's a metal-clad French door. Maybe if we went item by item, we can discuss it and ask for more clarification from them if they follow up, but the picture they show has a round-headed transom with round-headed shutters, so when you close it, it should close over the whole opening, and I don't know if that's what they're providing. It's one of my pet peeves, when shutters, when they're closed, don't actually meet. There's a gap. It always looks kind of silly. But that's one thing, and then there's like the chimney cap. It says be handmade by sheet metal, picture included. Well, I don't see a picture to know what it looks like, except for what's there.
Is it, is it your understanding that, that the bay window that's in this charming restoration is the bay window that they're willing to put on the left side of the doors with the front of the house as we look at it?
It's hard to say, because the house that's there has a little kick at the bottom, a little curve at the, at the overhang of the house, a two-story house, and the bay window sort of has a hip roof that also sort of curves, like a Chinese pagoda-like structure.
Right.
And so we don't know if that bay window is going to be three-sided, as shown, with a shed hip roof, if you will, but not a curved hip roof. We don't know.
Well, it's certainly not going to be balanced by the small window on the right-hand side of the doors, we face it, which will be contrary to the original design of the, of this house, where everything balances.
I mean, the front windows are talking about replacing. If they're replacing them in kind, and they're wood windows, I have no issue with them replacing them if they're, if they have been, they need to be, due to rot or deterioration, they need to be replaced, then that's fine. They're Marvin, but they're not saying if they're metal-clad or, or wood or what they are.
Does the fact that it alters the, the whole architectural scheme of the house, is that a factor? It was colonial revival, and that new door and the bay window will change the character of the house considerably, but it's not a contributing structure in the National Register District?
That's, that's, that's correct.
It's not a contributing structure.
Right, so, so changing it from colonial revival to something else is not a problem? Is that?
I, I remember reading through the nominees back in 1985, when they began the Historic District, that some houses had been changed more than once
Yeah.
on Main Street, from one style to another style. So, I mean, that's probably not uncommon, but.
Let the Castelli House was, you know, a federal-style house, and now it's an Italianate with a tower and the bay window, which was added, but it's done in brick.
Uh-huh. So do we have, do we need to actually talk with the applicants before we can go further, do you think?
I'm not sure what would be approving
Yeah.
or disapproving.
Yeah, okay.
One other question I have for the board. Is the new metal door, is that metal-clad or is that solid steel or something?
She said it was, she said just a metal door.
Yeah.
It'd be, I think, nice to know, I mean, all we're going to see is the metal size, so whether it's a wood behind it, I guess it doesn't really matter in that respect, but, because this apparently is already a metal door, right? The one that's there?
Uh, you know, I don't know.
If that's what it said, I believe.
I said it was a metal door, so
If it said it's a metal door, okay.
I think it's already metal. If we went with another, if we replaced it with a new metal door and the same size and same panels, we probably wouldn't care, but when we're changing from a, whatever it is, eight-panel, six-panel door to a pair of French doors, now you're changing it to a lot of glass and a transom. And that's the thing that I think, as a board, we need to decide if it's appropriate or not.
So do we need a motion to defer until the applicant can be present?
They'd be appropriate.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question, please. Would you like a drawing of the house to show after it's done, what it looks like?
Yes, and also we'd like the applicant to attend, and that way we can talk with them, so, I think, yeah.
Yeah, with the bay window, there could be something going on on the inside they're wanting to do, that, we don't know with that, how critical there might be an interior renovation, but.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we defer.
Second?
Second.
And any discussion?
I would just add, Robert, I think a drawing would be very helpful, but when they reference that, like, the bay window is being provided by Marvin windows, bring an actual cut sheet or photograph, so we know what the roof looks like. Is it eight-side, I mean, six-sided? Is it three-sided? I mean, how many sides does it have, and projection, and all those kinds of things for each one of them, the windows, the doors, the chimney cap. They reference a picture. I didn't see which picture they're talking about. The shutters, if they're going to be, if they're wooden now, if they're going back with wood. They appear to be painted wood. Some people want to go back with vinyl windows, because they don't have to paint them, and we don't typically approve vinyl window shutters. I just think we need more information to be able to fairly give them a review.
So we have a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that's the last new business on our agenda. Any staff reports or other business?
I don't have it. I know we'll have probably another item next month that's working its way through the Board of Zoning Appeals right now, but that we should have at least one item on the agenda next month.
Okay.
For sure.
All right. Any other, anything else? Anyone? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.